Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the August 25th, 2022 work session of the Henrico County School Board. At this time, I would like to make note of Mrs. Shea's physical absence from today's work session. She previously notified Board members of her request to participate electronically from a remote location due to a medical condition. Our school board policy P2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, requires a majority vote of the Board members present at the primary or central meeting location to allow Board members to participate in a meeting from a remote location. In accordance with this school board policy, Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move that the school board approve the remote participation of Mrs. Shea for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Now for a roll call vote. Ms. Atkins.
Aye.
Reverend Cooper.
Aye.
Ms. Ogburn.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mrs. Shea's request has been approved. Please note this meeting is being live streamed on the HCPS website, and we'll begin our meeting with a roll call vote. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Mrs. Shea?
Here.
Reverend Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Ogburn?
I'm here.
Mrs. Atkins?
Present.
And I'm present. Please let the record reflect that a quorum of the Board is physically present and Mrs. Shea is participating electronically. I ask Mrs. Shea to verbally note if she needs to leave the meeting and subsequently verbally note when she returns. And for those who may be watching, Mrs. Shea may or may not have her camera on or off depending on technical difficulty during the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. May I please have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Reverend Cooper, you get that one. Now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and the ayes have it. The agenda for today's meeting is approved. The next item on the agenda is closed session. Board members may have a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the school board go into closed session for discussion of matters under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia as amended pertaining to the assignment appointment performance salaries, disciplining resignation, and the discussion of requests for exemption from compulsory education that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you for the motion, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Now for the roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. Welcome back, everyone, to the August 25th, 2022 school board work session. I would just like to note for those watching or listening that we were able to get Mrs. Shea on video, and I would also like to add that Mrs. Shea requested I preside over today's meeting on her behalf since she is virtual and at times we may experience technical difficulty. So with that being said, the next item on the agenda is certification of closed session. Board members, may I have a motion?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. And now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent, please present items on your agenda.
Thank you, and good afternoon, members of the Board. For the first item, I am seeking your approval for a request for release from compulsory school attendance for student case number 22-23-CA-1, and the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the request for release from compulsory school attendance for student case number 22-23-CA-1?
I move that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case number 22-23-CA-1.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The release from compulsory school attendance has been approved.
All right, for the next item, this one is related to the appointment of a superintendent's designee for board meetings in my absence.
Okay, in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-76, the school board is required to approve a designee of the division superintendent to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend. Dr. Cashwell, do you have a recommendation for the Board?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board. It is my pleasure to recommend that the chief of school leadership be designated as my designee to attend school board meetings, and in the event that the chief of school leadership is unable to attend, the chief of staff would be named as a designee, a secondary designee, to attend school board meetings in my absence or my inability to attend.
Board members, is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation that the chief of school leadership and in their absence, the chief of staff be designated as the superintendent's designee?
I move that the school board approve the superintendent's recommendation that in her absence or inability to attend school board meetings, the chief of school leadership and as a secondary, the chief of staff be designated as the superintendent's designees to attend meetings of the school board.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Now for a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. For the next item, there are three policies coming forward for your review for which we'll be seeking your approval at our monthly meeting this evening, and in each case would be asking that you waive the 30-day review period for each. The first one is the policy revision to P2-04-001, regular meetings, and the revision here is to align two policies that were currently in conflict. That's policy P2-003-004, duties of the clerk, and aligning that so that it is amended to require only the chair or acting chair to sign meeting minutes with the clerk or deputy clerk. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Are there any questions or comments, Board members? Mrs. Shea? No?
Not on my part.
Thank you. Board members, we don't have any questions at this time, and we look forward to the approval this evening at the meeting.
Thank you. The next is a review to the proposed revisions for policy P2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, and this was amended to reflect changes to the Virginia Code that are effective September 1, 2022.
Board members, do you have any questions? Mrs. Shea, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Board members, we do not have any comments or questions at this time, and again, approval will be requested at the meeting this evening.
Thank you. Next, want to review proposed revisions to policy P8-02-001, school board advisory committees. These revisions also reflect amendments to the Virginia Code that will be effective September 1, 2022. That permits school boards to adopt a policy for its committees to conduct all virtual public meetings, and all virtual public meetings is defined in the applicable code section as a public meeting using electronic communication means during which all members who participate do so remotely rather than being assembled in one physical location and to which public access is provided through electronic communication means. And additionally, the policy includes parameters for hosting hybrid public meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Board members, are there any questions? Mrs. Shea, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have one quick question for clarity. I know we are each assigned to quite a few different committees, including school board committees, superintendent committees, community committees, et cetera. This would only pertain to the school board advisory committee, those like five or six, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Board members, any other questions or comments? All right. Madam Superintendent?
All right, thank you. That concludes items related to policy revisions. Next, we are so pleased to present our 2022-2023 Back to School update. I know we have a number of presenters making their way to the podium, and I'll be happy to kick that presentation off. So this afternoon, we are going to provide an update on school readiness as we prepare to welcome our students back on Monday, August 29. And as you know, teacher recruitment has been a hot topic, so first and foremost, I want to let you know that every class in this school district will be covered on the beginning for the first day of school. So the division is 95.2% staff for classroom teachers with 175 openings division-wide at this moment. For context, at the board meeting two weeks ago, we reported 211 teacher vacancies. That includes 80 new positions that we added this year to support instruction and learning. So these new positions, which are absolutely necessary, do skew the hiring picture a bit. So without them, we would have a similar number of teacher openings as we had at this time last year. That said, our goal is to make sure that students have access to their desired elective classes as well as their core content areas. We recently welcomed 500 teachers to New Teacher Academy. This cohort includes Henrico teachers who are new to the profession as well as veteran educators who are new to our county. We were so excited to welcome them. We will also leverage the experience and expertise of staff who are certified to teach, regardless of their current role in the district, to support classroom learning until full-time teachers are hired. This includes temporary assignments as a teacher or a collaborative teacher for some of our instructional coaches, and central staff will also fill in as needed. At the secondary level, four Virginia-certified teachers will facilitate sections of higher-level math or physical science virtually through an education partner called Proximity, and these classes will be similar to virtual Virginia courses offered in the past. I also want to note that an instructional assistant will be in the classroom to support and supervise students at all times. And as in years past, a teacher may be covering an extra class period in their building until a permanent teacher is hired, and in those cases, teachers would receive a stipend for teaching during their planning period. And finally, we have 75 board substitutes in our classrooms, and these are not traditionally daily subs. They hold a bachelor's degree with an emphasis in education or a Virginia teaching license. They're assigned to a specific classroom and do not float throughout the school the way that daily substitutes may. Although all classes are covered on day one, we continue to recruit teachers and staff through our job fairs, colleges and university visits, and support of career switchers and instructional aides who are seeking a teaching license. We've also extended our employee referral program that offers a bonus for staff who help recruit new employees to Henrico County Public Schools. And as we shared at the last meeting, we have job postings for teacher openings at specific schools as well as general postings on our site. So while teacher vacancies have garnered the most attention this summer, there is work being done in every department and office to prepare for a successful school year. We are 100% staff with school counselors, are recruiting a handful of nurses as well as social workers and psychologists to support the health and mental well-being of our students. Now, Mr. Pritchard, Dr. Grant, and Dr. Hughes will provide details from their respective divisions.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Dr. Cashwell. From an operational standpoint, we're going to focus on four areas: buildings and facilities, transportation, school nutrition, and health and wellness. Our facilities, custodians, and school-based teams have been hard at work this summer preparing buildings. Staff completed projects in all 72 buildings, including HVAC, roofing, flooring, maintenance, and deep cleaning of classrooms and common spaces. Updates to security cameras systems are underway, and you will receive a separate safety and security update in October. A great deal of work has taken place in this summer in the Oak Avenue complex where the old Holland Springs High School was transformed for an Achievable Dream Certified Academy Middle School and programs led by family and community engagement teams. Renovations continue to school entry vestibules for safety. Drivers delivered countless materials and textbooks to schools across the division, and the design work began for the new ACE Centers and the new Virginia Randolph Project. And now moving on to transportation. Jim Ellis and his team used ridership data to evaluate 1,658 bus routes and optimize them for efficiency. As a result, the number of buses scheduled to arrive after the bell rings is down to two. And work is still being done to eliminate late buses completely. One way that we're doing this is to schedule earlier pickup times for Tier 1 schools. Students who are arriving early will have the opportunity to get their breakfast immediately upon arrival. The transportation team officially launched a new real-time mobile bus app division-wide. They received and prepared new buses for daily use and provided both CDL and annual training for new and returning drivers. As pandemic funding, school nutrition programs came to an end, we have developed post-pandemic food service plans for all of our schools. School Nutrition Service is happy to announce that they will not raise student meal prices for the upcoming school year. Meal service will resume pre-pandemic service models to offer students the greatest variety of food, quality, and service. While meal applications are once again required to qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, many ACPS students will not be required to complete applications due to direct certification and the community eligibility provision, also known as CEP. School Nutrition Services continues to expand its participation in the CEP program with 40 schools currently offering free meals to all students. A list of current CEP schools can be found on our website. And I will now turn this presentation over to Dr. Ingrid Grant, our Chief of School Leadership.
Good afternoon. As you know, ACPS continues to prioritize the health and wellness of each of our 48,000 students and 7,000 employees. This summer, staff reviewed new guidance from the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health to adjust response plans for communicable diseases, including COVID. Clinic supplies, PPE, were inventoried and restocked over the summer. Although they are not required for the school attendance, we have ensured that masks and wipes are available at all of our schools for students, staff, and visitors who may request them. Our nurses and school health service staff continue to work with families and the VDH on vaccinations and school physical requirements. Community vaccination clinics and resources are available to families with children who need routine vaccinations. A list of requirements can be found on the HCPS and VDH websites. And finally, training on health-related matters was provided as needed to appropriate staff. Let's take a look now at some instructional plans underway to welcome students backed and engaged in their learning. Our elementary schools are excited to return to our traditions of special events that make our schools the unique communities that they are. At the elementary level, principals have taken advantage of opportunities to meet families through cookouts, new student pizza parties, and events like popsicles with principals. Open houses are happening at this moment for pre-K through 5 with information from principals, teachers, and PTA. These events focus on re-engaging our communities, community partners, and fostering collaboration between home and school. Here are just a few examples of some exciting opportunities at the elementary level. As a special treat, kindergarten students will receive books to add to their home library in hopes of fostering a love of reading at home. Holiday Elementary School will be welcoming their second cohort of kindergarten students to the dual-language immersion program. Glen Lee Elementary continues to offer telehealth services to its community. Harvey Elementary hosts the residency program from the University of Richmond. Tuckahoe Elementary will host the Learning and Discovery After-School Program. In summary, elementary school teams have welcomed staff, students back to the building and are prepared to engage and enrich students for the 2022-23 school year. Secondary students are also excited to welcome students and families to the 22-23 school year. Middle and high schools are hard at work hosting orientations, open houses, camps, back-to-school nights, and laptop distribution events. High schools are also preparing to introduce the Class of 2023 to their school community through convocation. Our secondary staffs are really excited about all these events being live and in person. New to the 22-23 school year, HVA is officially a standalone K-12 school. As mentioned earlier, then in Achievable Dream Secondary has a new home at the Oak Avenue Complex. Verena will welcome students to the new Center of Environmental Studies and Sustainability, and Hermitage will welcome students to the new Center of Allied Health and Human Services. We are excited about the progression of opportunities we are able to provide our students in HCPS. In ACPS, we recognize that building relationships along with the structures and student support, belonging, and emotional safety lays the groundwork for a successful school year. This year, we are highlighting the reach-thin-teach mindset that emphasizes the importance of fostering strong relationships between students and adults at the onset. A reach-thin-teach, the first 10-day resource, has been developed with reminders and examples of ways to engage students, reestablish routines, and set expectations for behavior in those first 10 days of school. Beyond the start of the school, we will continue to offer school-based mental health services and socio-emotional learning opportunities. Alongside the rigorous academic programs, there are the hallmarks to HCPS. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Leslie Hughes.
Good afternoon. As a reminder, the Board has received updates during the last year on the development of the Teaching and Learning Framework, which aligns to Goal 1 in Destination 2025 that states Henrico County Public Schools will achieve academic excellence by transforming teaching and learning to provide engaging, learned-centered experiences for all students. Based on teacher feedback, the framework was developed to ensure teachers have a roadmap to grow professionally and the support and resources necessary to meet the needs of all students. As shown on the slide, the Teaching and Learning Framework is comprised of three distinct components. The aligned curriculum anchors instruction to state standards and outcomes for students. The instructional model represents the components that drive teaching and learning in Henrico. As educators prepare their instruction, they consider how to design, deliver, and assess in a learned-centered community. Ongoing reflection and adapting their response to student needs creates an instructional environment that supports all learners. To support our incredible teachers, we offered aligned professional learning that takes place throughout the division and in schools that allows for job-embedded application of our content-specific sources, resources, excuse me. This model is incredibly important as we welcome back students whose learning is continuing to recover from the disruptions over the last years. The SOL scores released last week are another data point that illustrates where the gaps in student learning persist. In light of the pandemic, the SOL pass rates are not unexpected, but will continue to help inform our instructional strategies as we continue to address learning gaps. While we know we are not yet back to pre-pandemic pass rates, the data is helpful in identifying opportunities for targeted student support as well as the need for sustained focus on closing achievement gap between student groups. However, we are confident that the hard work, resilience, and sheer commitment to one another that our students, families, and teachers and staff have demonstrated over the last years will carry us forward as we embark on a bright new school year together. In September, the Board will receive an update and will share information from multiple departments on school accountability and SOL scores. And before I move on, I want to let you know that at your seats, you have a clipboard that all instructional staff was provided during the summer. That is a clipboard that shows our instructional model and has a QR code to our HCPSU, so we invite you to take a look at that. In addition to the rigorous academic content HCPS is known for, we continue to foster community building in all classrooms and schools while creating a sense of safety and security through the reestablishment of routines, procedures, and behavioral expectations. Pre-K through 12 community-building activities are embedded throughout the day or week and are meant to contribute to the creation of learned-centered environments and may include brief discussions and activities to provide students and faculty and staff with the opportunity to share, think, collaborate, promote joint problem-solving, get to know one another, explore commonalities and differences, and to build and strengthen relationships. Additionally, all students have access to the comprehensive school counseling program that addresses their social, emotional, and mental health and wellness, and all students pre-K through grade 12 will be provided with weekly research-based SEL lessons delivered by the classroom teacher. We know, of course, that our teachers and our support staff are not the only group in caring adults who support our students. HCPS can be more successful with our families, parents, and community partners. On August 19, hundreds of people came together for the annual back-to-school kickoff hosted by Family and Community Engagement. The event offered resources, supplies, and opportunities to create connections that will benefit students, staff, and adults this school year. To build on that momentum, the Family and Community Engagement Team is planning a series of workshops and events as part of the Bridge Builders Academy. Watch for a complete schedule of events on the HCPS website in the coming days. We will also include a calendar and future editions of the Family Letter in the binder. Dr. Cashwell, the members of the Board, that concludes our up-to-date on back-to-school readiness, other than to say we can't wait to see our students back on Monday, August 29. And at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard, Dr. Cashwell, Dr. Grant, and Dr. Hughes. Amazing presentation. The team has certainly been busy preparing for back-to-school. Let's see. Ms. Atkins, do you have questions and comments?
I do. Thank you for the presentation. I really like the reach-and-teach or reach-to-teach. I've seen it that way as well. I think it's an excellent option for educators to personalize the learning experience. Another piece of reach-and-teach, but more so reach-to-teach, is balancing skill and will. I've seen it delivered that way, and so when individuals understand the will that they want for their students and then also understand the skills that they have, they can better align and balance that, and that really does create that, I would say, the relation-rich environment, which I know that's one of the terms that's used in trying to develop relationships in the classroom. So I'm really, really happy to see that. I'll talk about staffing fairly briefly because I want to emphasize what a positive story this is and that I'm grateful for the individuals and the teams and HR really working towards making sure that students do have the right to achieve in receiving the support to succeed. We keep that at top of mind. I do know that we have many, many positive stories, and I just want to say to the public as well that significant staffing shortages, I know whether it's in one district or another district, it does need a better ending. But understand that we are working incredibly hard, the leadership teams, staff, and individuals in the community working together. And I'll use Brene Brown because I like the And I'll use Brene Brown because I like the quote, because I think it fits in this space. And owning our story can be hard, but it is not nearly as difficult as running away from it. And what makes me proud is that Henrico County Public Schools doesn't run away from it. We acknowledge it, and we work on it. And there's more good news because families are excited about this school year. The kids that I've had the opportunity to chat with are looking forward to the amazing things that are going to happen in their classrooms. And we live, many of us, in beautiful neighborhoods that wrap their arms around students with high needs and trauma because we all desire promising futures for our babies. And if any one district has more staffing challenges than another district, that is true as well. But that's only a slither of a story. It's important when you understand your history to know that resolution to things that are complicated does take time. And yes, the pandemic compounded an issue, but we are going to continue to work for resolution because when one area has an issue, it impacts the other areas, and we all want to work towards a balanced one, Henrico. We're going to do that. And I'll ask Ms. Bolden to come up because I do have questions for her as well. And I want to just start with letting you know, I am not expecting an immediate response at this time because tough questions deserve the time to figure out the solution to them. So I wanted to just start with that and give you the question of if you can share plans on how we can get HCPS closer to resource equity for staff and for students. And so that you understand my interpretation of resource equity, I'm talking about the allocation and use of resources, people, time, and money. And as you talk with other experts, gather more data, definitely look at stories. I'm going to ask that you also look at history because if you do go back and look at the Great Recession and you look at all of those big impacts to our country, it does filter down to education. And particularly, when you look at the cap, that was something that really impacted black and brown babies four times the rate. So as we look for resolution and understanding that we have done a tremendous job of adding support roles, but this goes way back when positions like counselors, bus drivers, so forth and so on were cut. And I think that if we take some of that history that we've learned from years ago as to why, and as we add to our staffing, when we're adding to staffing, we are making headway and we are doing positive things, but the rate in which it will significantly impact black and brown will be different, not because of a pandemic, not because of right now, but because of what has happened in history, and there may be some clues to how we can continue to make positive progress. So what a mouthful that was. So let me close with telling you that it took a long time to get to where we are, and we are moving forward, and it's going to take a little bit longer to get to where we want to be. But the message is clear that we're moving forward, and that is what's so important. So I'll pause so that you can respond.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, and that certainly was very broad, and we do work across many, many departments in the division. And I would appreciate the opportunity to step back and gather information and present you and the board something that's very thoughtful and cohesive and well put together to answer your question and address your comments. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And then, let me just check and make sure I didn't have any other. That is all. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden, and thank you, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Ogburn.
Just two real quick ones. Mr. Pritchard, you were talking about our meal program. No, which one? I think that's right.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I thought so. You were expecting bus drivers, but no. I just, it's been a while since our families had to fill out the forms and the applications and all that stuff, and you had said that when they fill them out, that is there any confusion for families? So this is just a curiosity for me. I've had one person call as to whether they should or should not fill out the forms and that kind of thing, and who do they call if they don't know?
Well...
Other than, they don't call you. I know that.
No, they do not call me. But I would say if there's any kind of doubt of reservation that you do fill out the form and go through the process, and number two, if they have any questions, please call School Nutrition Services. There are people there that will be able to answer your questions and direct them in the right way.
Because I know, you know, this has been getting a lot of press lately about what meals, you know, which schools have meals and which don't, and I know this could be confusing after having a time where meals were covered. So I appreciate that. And plus, I think parents are out of the habit of filling out these forms. They haven't had to. So this may be a little bit of a thing for parents as we go back, so I'm just curious about that. But secondly, Dr. Grant, I'm going to ask you about, well, it's really both of you. I'm sorry. But y'all were talking about SEL and how it's scattered through the aligned curriculum. And I've actually had a couple of questions from constituents about this here lately about what that actually means. Because I had specifically a parent call and ask about what does it mean to have lessons scattered throughout the day and scattered throughout the curriculum, and where can they see this curriculum and how that all works? Because it is a little bit different than it used to be. But you had said too that counseling is working together, counselors and classroom teachers will be working like once a week, they'll have a... So if you could talk a little bit about this, how that works, and would be appreciated.
Sure. So Tiffany, could you go back to the slide where I actually showed? Okay. So this is our social-emotional curriculum that's pre-K through 12. And this curriculum right here is delivered at different times during the day depending on the level. So the pre-K and elementary setting is typically in morning meeting, and for middle school and high school, that curriculum is typically delivered during advisory. And these curriculums really, when you have your clipboards in front of you and you think about the instructional model and that learner-centered community, these curriculums really help build character, build community, build, you know, our 60s that we talk about, those soft skills. What does it take to be a student in a learner-centered community? What does it take to be a good citizen? You know, what do you need to be a good collaborator? That's what that is sort of set aside. When people talk about things being embedded into our curriculum, our curriculum follows our state standards. And so there are lots of tenants of our curriculum, and I'll just use an elementary example. In our elementary, kindergarten, and first-grade classrooms, embedded in our curriculum is a lot of standards around this idea of citizenship or the idea of character. And so many of those concepts are also embedded into this, you know, SEL curriculum, if you will. So when people talk about SEL being built into the curriculum, it naturally lives within our state standards. It's character. It's things you learn in government class. It's things you learn in history class. And so that's kind of where the difference is. We have things that are naturally taught within our curriculum that highlight these concepts, skills, and strategies for students, and then we also have this standalone. And when I say standalone, it's not that you stop and start, but this is something that puts specific emphasis on building those quality skills and characters.
So if a parent were to have a question about this part of the curriculum?
Sure.
The question I've gotten is, where do I find it? So, because when they heard the term, it was sprinkled throughout, this parent was like, well, if it's sprinkled throughout, do I have to look everywhere for it? You know, that kind of thing. And so if a parent were to have a question about this?
Sure.
What do you suggest?
So I think if a parent has a question about, they should start with the school. The school counselors would be a wonderful resource. Anybody on the school-based mental health team, school psychologist, school social worker, they could call my office, any of our specialists or coordinators who help oversee and implement this curriculum. I could help someone, and we certainly could show them the scope and sequence for this. And then if a parent wanted to, I'd be certainly happy to sit down and show them some examples of where it lives throughout our state standards.
Okay. I appreciate that because like, and I think I've sent you an email.
I think you did send me an email.
But I have had more than one parent ask about this, and I think it's, you know, it's one of those things that as people get used to it?
Sure.
You know, and as things, as we start the school year too, it'll become apparent as to where it's happening. But only one other thing is I just want to thank you all. Dr. Grant and I were talking about this earlier. I can't imagine what the last couple of weeks have been like for all of you and getting those numbers that Dr. Cashwell shared and having every classroom covered is an amazing feat. It really is by somebody who's qualified to teach them. So those who have had to switch from what they, you know, originally thought they were going to be doing or go and take over and combining classes and all of that, I mean, we've talked about this and we keep saying the all-hands-on-deck and team approach and all of those things, it sounds trite, but it's true. And so to all of you, I really, I think we are all so appreciative of getting us to the finish line and getting us to Monday ready to go. It's a huge accomplishment, especially in the times that we have where we've had people come and go and the teacher shortage and all of it. It's just, it's just amazing that we're at the point where we're, you know, can breathe a little bit of a sigh of relief that we're ready for Monday. So thank you all sincerely that we're ready, and it's only because of your hard work that we've gotten there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I guess I just want to begin by echoing the sentiment of my peer, Ms. Ogburn, because I think too often so much noise is being shared around the deficiencies and not enough credit is being shared on the successes. So I want to echo that. I just can't emphasize that enough. First, let me start. Dr. Cashwell, I want to thank you for the update on our staffing levels that you provided and that on day one, every class will be covered and all the strategies that we're implementing to ensure that we are fully staffed. I would ask, can I get a copy of that information you shared before the staff began the presentation so that I may share that to constituents who may not listen to the work session because you shared a very thorough plan to address the shortage and needs and that needs to be communicated to further allay or to ease concerns?
Absolutely. I'll be sure to share that. We're making progress actually as this meeting is going on, so I look forward to sharing the specifics.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bolden, real quick, I'm not going to, I just want a couple of quick questions. First of all, at some point, can I get a breakdown of the vacancies that still exist per district and for school? Which schools have the most and how many of our total number of schools would be considered fully staffed?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure, I don't know if you have that now, but...
We can provide that for you.
Thank you so much. Another question, from an equitable standpoint as it relates to fulfilling vacancies, could you speak a little bit to the intentional efforts that are being implemented to balance the number of short-term, long-term substitutes versus licensed teachers at certain schools?
Sure. And the manner in which I would respond would be to share that I believe we're achieving equity with regard to the support that we're providing schools. So we can always provide differentiated pay, but we can differentiate the supports, and we're working to do that with the help of instruction and the Department of Learning.
Can you just give a highlight of some of the kind of supports, example that we... Just some of the supports that we do provide those schools? That'd be great. Thank you. And those staff members, thank you.
We're currently in the process of doing an asset map, looking at our schools that have the most need and what additional supports we can provide on the district level to support our principals so that they can support our teachers, and teachers can support students within our schools.
That's awesome. So what you're saying is we're assessing the need, and then therefore, once we complete the assessment, then we're going to implement strategies?
Yes.
And allocate resources?
Yes, we have been allocating resources, and we will continue to allocate resources to the schools that need the most support.
Thank you so much, Dr. Grant. Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
For our non-bus-riding students who are being picked up and dropped off at our schools, we know that the first week of school and beyond can be a nightmare for our families and staff. And you know what I'm going to say to you because I spoke to you before, Fairfield Middle School is, one, that I definitely hear complaints about issues with traffic and safety with parent-guardian pickup-drop-off. Could you just speak briefly to how we're addressing these issues at schools and our efforts to work with the county in addressing some of the issues pertaining to traffic patterns, drop-off, pickup procedures?
I know that this past year, we went out because of what you said, and we did have an increased amount of riders that were being dropped off by their parents this year due to the pandemic, and I'm pretty sure a lot of that trend is going to happen. We still encourage people to use the bus. That's the best way to stop a lot of the congestion that takes place. But in the past, what we've done is I know that myself and the school safety and emergency management team have gone out and done traffic studies. We've also implored the county to do traffic studies through public works to come out and do this. I know that we have a very good relationship with our Henrico Police Department, but that is something that only the Henrico Police are able to direct traffic, and it's something I know that they have their challenges to with staffing, and that becomes a challenge, particularly when you look at 72 schools. And so one of the things that we do is we evaluate the existing traffic plan and see if there's things that we can do to improve it. Some of the recommendations, particularly like at Fairfield Middle School, would be only a right-hand turn out of the school because what ends up happening is that you sit there at that, there is no light there, and we've had traffic studies done, and it doesn't warn a traffic light. So turning left out of there can hold and occupy traffic for a long period of time whereas a right-hand turnout, you can make that and keep traffic moving. So that would actually reduce, it would increase the queuing within the property of the school and be able to drop students off and get them out a whole lot faster.
Well, using that example, Ms. Harris is shaking her head because she's familiar with that as well, and she's had constituent calls that she's afforded to me because of Fairfield. How do we implement that change in that instance?
And we've talked to, we would continue to talk to building administrators and see if there was something that we can do to help out with that. You know, they have the ability and the right on the school property to determine the traffic pattern. I would also say too is that along with putting your child on the bus, follow the traffic pattern that the school sets out for you. It's when people start doing their own thing that creates more chaos and more congestion, and you've got people trying to get in and out of the same lanes within a property like Fairfield.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Next question quickly for school nutrition. Who can answer that? Hello, Mr. Whack?
Good evening.
For our schools with community eligibility provisions, our families do not have to apply for free meals. Do we have a listing of schools where our families do not have to apply for free meals and a listing of schools where our families would need to submit applications for free and reduced meals?
Yes, there's a lot of information on the Student Nutrition Services website. So there are 40 specific schools, so that is a majority of our schools where the free reduced lunch applies and the applications are not required. I actually have the list behind me, but again, that's on our website, and parents can apply both online electronically this year as well as we will have paper copies of those application forms at the schools where they're needed.
So we do have available, it's just that we need to ask them to go look and see if their school is or is not eligible.
If they do that in advance or when, yeah, arriving at school, there will be hard copies there.
Thank you. And one more question.
Just note, I'm going to add to that. You're absolutely right. It's on the web, and we've sent some division communication to all families who have students registered with it. As a parent of a Henrico student, I know I've received some notices and many of you have, and then principals of our non-CEP schools are able to additionally communicate and keep pushing families and directing them towards either the paper form... pushing families and directing them towards either the paper form and assisting them with the paper form or the electronic version. So we'll continue to spread the word. So you've probably seen a lot of messages from Henrico schools about this topic of meals and you'll continue to, and particularly at those specific schools where there is not the school-wide eligibility.
I appreciate that, because I think, you know, the pendulum has shifted, the paradigm has shifted, it's not like it was. And to that point, for our families who may not be eligible for free and reduced meals, but may experience a hardship during the school year, can you remind us of what resources do we have available to them and steps would they need to take to make sure that their child receives a meal?
And one thing I would point out that was mentioned in the presentation, this year the reduced lunch is a free lunch. Getting, the state is really funding the differential between a reduced lunch and a free lunch. They are free to all students that would qualify. But in terms of the specifics within the school, we do have some flexibility around, like, for example, the accumulation of student debt and so forth, but we can look at the financial need of the individual families.
So that would be based, that would be school-based, the school?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, so as Mr. Wax said, the reduced lunch is actually a free lunch through the additional state funding, which I think will assist families. And then certainly, our school cafeterias and managers are prepared to work with families should there be some challenges and making sure those balances are covered. But important to note, outside of our school nutrition program, there are a number of resources we can help connect families to, whether it's our community partners, local food pantries. Our family and community engagement team does an outstanding job assisting families with connecting them to resources even outside of the school division. So I would say if there's a family who has questions or need, they could start with their school, they have a family advocate on staff, school social worker counselors, and our school administrative teams are willing and able to help connect families to our family and community engagement team. If they should have any needs, they can help navigate that situation.
Well, I appreciate that, because I don't want persons not to ask because they may feel ashamed or they may feel embarrassed, but our goal is to have enough resources available to give you assistance in that need. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Mr. Wax. I just have two more questions. Dr. Grant, you spoke about health and wellness, so families and staff who may have concerns regarding monkeypox and any protocols, HCPS would be implemented. How are we responding to any of those concerns? And is there information online that our families and staff can refer to to get more information about monkeypox or any other communicable diseases that may be impacting our learning environment?
Sure, that's a great question, thank you, Dr. Cooper. We, like any of our communicable or infectious diseases, we have been in monitoring mode throughout the summer. Dr. Grant, Mrs. Coy and I have participated in meetings with Richmond Health Department and the Virginia Health Department. The Virginia Health Department put out guidance just last week for school divisions. I can share this with you in the weekly update. And right now, we're just in a monitoring mode, you know. The guidance from the VDH and the Richmond Health Department is that school divisions don't need to move forward with any procedures, any different than we would right now for the flu or for the chickenpox or any of our other infectious diseases. But we'll continue to monitor and certainly if we get to a point where we need to inform families further, we'll put guidance on our website. But I think the most important thing that, you know, we really want students and staff to come to school healthy and certainly keep them informed as much as we possibly can.
No, thank you.
I'll be glad to share that with the board.
No, thank you so much. Last question, I know we didn't mention this, Dr. Cashwell, but a quick question. During our work session meeting back in June, we presented on software platform securely that's designed to prove parent guardian visibility into their students' online activity on HCPS-issued devices and to provide online student safety features. The question I have, I don't know who might answer this, is it had already been piloted at some of our schools and data was collected about the experience. It's about to go live, right? And so since this technology would be new to some of our families, this upcoming money, could we speak to some of the concerns that have been centered around the use of data? Whether it be shared with SROs, student privacy, and the potential even for outing, quote unquote, for some of our LGBTQ students and their families?
Yes, sir. It is a software that's installed on our devices, our ACPS devices, but it is done for, at least from a standpoint of a safety monitoring, somebody that is looking to self-harm, suicide, school violence and areas like that. But it's also a communication tool between parents and their students. And that's primarily what it was put into place for, was to allow parents and students to have those kind of conversations, to talk about it at home. SROs are not involved with any kind of communication that comes in with this. It's something that's handled through administrators and school counselors, and I know that's why Ms. Hughes did not walk away so quickly when this question came up, because I know that we've put a lot of thought and work into this and making sure that it's implemented out. It's not something that's going to be directly put out on Monday. We deliberately are kind of putting this out after the chaos of the beginning of school and be able to make sure that parents are educated on this and get the right information on how to go about this and some tools that go along with how to talk to your child, not only, not only along with just how to get connected.
And if I might add, and thank you, Mr. Pritchard, so as he stated, we did pilot this, we traditionally had even before shifting to this product, online web filtering and monitoring for safety on HCPS-issued devices. So the new component of the product we're moving toward is an additional tool for parents and guardians that allows them to have additional access to information, should they wish to. So remember, we're talking about HCPS devices, which when they're issued to our students and families, they acknowledge an acceptable use agreement, that these are instructional devices for instructional use. Of course, our students take them home to be able to continue their work and homework. Parents have asked, and one of the things we learned from the pilot that was a positive for being able to limit screen time at home, for example, on a school-issued device, this feature for parents who wish to use it would allow them to limit the amount of screen time and have some limits when the device is in use at home. And then, of course, to be able to see online activity, should they, should they wish to do that again on the school-issued device, which according to our acceptable use agreement is for instructional purposes. So it's really increasing the line of communication between families and guardians and students as it relates to instruction and the device. And it is, as far as outside sharing, as Mr. Pritchard stated, that's not the intent. We take student privacy very seriously, but certainly the feature related to the online monitoring, which is not new, is related to making sure that when students may be searching things related to self-harm, harming other school security issues, that we have a procedure in place to make sure appropriate staff would be notified and then we would appropriately connect with the student and families in a timely manner.
Well, I think, thank you for that update, because I think that last feature could give the impression that the data is being shared even beyond those individuals that you mentioned in those specific cases. And so I feel comfortable knowing that this is not information we're sharing with SROs or any disciplinary kind of piece, but administrators and parents in that regard. So with the staggered implementation, how we, how we doing the rollout?
Well, I mean, it's going to become available. I know that we will be working on messaging through communications to make sure that that goes out, but I mean, knowing that we've tested this thing through our pilot programs and feel pretty comfortable with this, we just kind of wanted to at least let the first week of school and all of that's chaos and massive filling out the forms that need to be filled out.
And our web filtering's in place as devices are issued. He's talking about parents signing up for their parent view piece. We also have the parent app available for buses, so we've been communicating that. So we all can, we don't want to flood communication all at once, but certainly as students enter classrooms the first day, they're getting their devices, we'll make sure families who wish to have that feature and have access to how to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard, thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Cashwell, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. First of all, I just want to thank the whole team, but especially Ms. Bolden for her team's tremendous work watching these, our employment numbers, it's almost been like watching a telethon as the numbers kind of tick up. I know I've been monitoring the vacancies daily, and I'm sure many of my colleagues have been as well, and so I appreciate that. Dr. Cashwell, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to reiterate a little bit of what you said in your opening. It's tremendous that we have all of our classrooms covered for the first day, but it's beyond just having an adult in the room, correct, in terms of coverage? We have skilled individuals to meet our students on the first day, correct?
That's right. So it's a combination of board subs, which as I said, are not the same as daily subs who would rotate throughout a building to handle openings, but board subs who, you know, have their teaching licenses or credentials in related areas, who are there to serve in a longer term until a full-time staff member is hired. A number of cases where there are individuals who are certified teachers, who are currently in other roles, who have been shifted temporarily to the classroom roles, so qualified, as you said, adults, teachers in our buildings to serve where we are still seeking full-time teachers for those vacancies.
And you mentioned we added 80 positions and that had we not added those 80 additional instructional support positions, we would be at a typical hiring number for this time of the year, is that correct?
That's exactly right. So, you know, we understood how crucial, you know, we've been working as a school division, and certainly it's been the board's priority to make sure we're staffing our schools above the requirements, above the SOQ additional support staff. We talk about issues of making sure schools that have greater needs have the extra supports. Those are in place, but you know, it's certainly in a time where there are staffing challenges presents a greater challenge. So yes.
And I think, I think what you mentioned there is so important, that we staff at a higher ratio than the state requires and at a higher ratio than many of the other localities around us do. And so I think that's important to note, to note as well. And as I've had conversations with some of my principals that who have had, when I look at the official list, it looks like they have, I won't say significant vacancies, because none of our schools have, you know, significant, significant vacancies, but, you know, a handful of vacancies and having conversations, while on paper it looks like a vacancy, they've worked the master schedule to really fill those gaps. So while it exists on paper in what our students are experiencing, it's, it's not, it's not really a vacancy. Does that make sense?
I think that goes to the point I led with, which was each classroom is covered, you know, even where there are schools still working to secure full-time staff to come onboard and, yeah, so whether it's shifting some things with master schedules, using board subs, us deploying staff, yes, lots of creative scenarios, you know, not to diminish in any way the staffing challenges that are significant in a number of our schools. But as you said, some really creative thinking to make sure that all of our students have a great experience coming to school with a caring, qualified instructor.
And I appreciate that point of clarity from you, because I think when you look purely at the numbers, when someone from the community or from the outside looks purely at the numbers, it's not really conveying the whole story. And certainly there are challenges, but the team has really done a tremendous job. And I really want to thank everybody in our Henrico Schools team for recognizing that we all hold a role in this and the central staff and our coaches who have flooded in to help support. I know, as Ms. Ogbonn said, it's all hands on deck, even board members are looking at how we can, you know, support in different capacities. We're all, we really are all in this together. Mr. Pritchard, when we talk about the new bus app, I know that that communication went out in the August 5th edition of the binder, but for those who may not have opened the binder or gotten that far, has there been other communication to our parents about this app or how should they find information?
Yes, I mean, I know that several communications have gone out as we've worked with the Communications Department to make sure that that information has been pumped out periodically throughout the summer. But the best information is right there on our website, there's a transportation tab that the parents can go to that will give them all the detailed information, how to get set up, be it if you're an Apple user or a Droid user, everything is there. There's a YouTube video that'll help you along with getting started.
And I would note that as parents or families are checking and power school to see which bus they've been assigned, you're going to click on that yellow school bus to find out that information. And as Mr. Pritchard stated, you're linked right to our site where you can find all the information and the videos right there. So it's kind of a one-stop shop. And it's easy to find, even if you've already done that and didn't have a chance to look at that point by just visiting our site.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. We talked a little, Reverend Cooper touched a little bit on monkeypox, and we kind of talked broadly about some health protocols in place going into the new year. But as it's been evolving over the last two years, can you share specifically what a student should do if they test positive for COVID, what the, kind of the next steps are? And then also, if a staff member tests positive for COVID, what are their next steps?
Sure. So if a student or staff member tests positive for COVID, they're certainly going to let the school know like they would when they are sick with any illness. The recommendation from the VDH is that, and Henrico was following that recommendation, that if you are tested positive for COVID, that you will isolate or you are quarantined on days zero through five. So if you're a student, you know, zero through five, staff member, zero through five. On days six through 10, students and staff may return to school or return to work, and the recommendation is that you wear a mask.
Okay, thank you. And that, I believe, is similar to how we ended the school year, is that true?
Yes, that is correct. That's how we ended the school year.
It just, it seems to change so frequently. I wanted to make sure in the last three months, we didn't miss anything and that our families were up to date, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And you'd need to be fever-free.
I was going to say, and similarly to any illness, when you come back to school, wearing that mask is also contingent upon you being fever-free and medication-free for 24 hours.
Thank you. And then the next, Ms. Consella may touch on as well, because I know this is a point of passion for her, but as we go, as we go into the new year and we were resetting expectations for our students in our building, particularly with behavior and discipline and cell phone use and all of those things, what are our plans to really set the expectation for our students that not only is this in the code of conduct, but this is important to us, this is, this is going to be enforced?
If I may just tag on to that, since that is on my list, Mrs. Shea, if you don't mind, if I can just add a couple more things for the team to address. I believe we're looking at barriers to instruction and not only given our SOL results, but just because we want to start the new year off and have academic excellence, right? If the team could also address, you've already addressed relationships, but I want to hear more about cell phones, attendance, and just summarize how some of this social, emotional learning and supports are going to really help us with behavior, right? Thank you, Mrs. Shea, for letting me just work smarter, not harder on that, on that answer.
Absolutely.
As stated in our student code of conduct, cell phones should not be used during the instructional day. And we have worked with our principals over the summer stressing that. We had a positive day of school culture with all of our administrators. And this year, we're going to be proactive in making sure during those expectation behavioral assemblies, that students know clearly what the expectations are for this upcoming school year. There are instances where teachers might allow a student to use a cell phone for instructional purposes only, that is the only way. Other than that, students should not have their cell phones out during the instructional day.
And I would add to what Dr. Grant has said, and she's and her team, as well as Dr. Hughes's team, have really worked to make sure that the right resources are there for our administrators, not just related specifically to discipline, but to building first the relationships, right? Setting the tone, setting the culture, I think that the reach to teach, you know, that really is foundational, right? So building the strong relationships and sense of school community and then understanding how the rules and structures within our code of conduct allow us to have a disruptive, a non-disruptive learning environment, and that benefits everyone in the school community. So it's really, those two things really go hand in hand, and I think what you'll see is an emphasis on not just explaining rules and enforcing them, but on the why around how there's, we're building positive school learning communities.
Ms. Consella, did you have anything else tied to that before I move to one last thing?
I don't, I don't think so.
Dr. Hughes had something to add, I think.
Dr. Hughes actually has something to add.
Well, you, attendance was a piece of that. Well, attendance was a piece of that question, so I just wanted to make sure we answered that for you. So, you know, all schools have a school quality plan and within that school quality plan, schools look at data for their schools to help drive decisions and meet the needs of students. And part of that plan is attendance. So schools do look very closely at attendance. If you remember during COVID, when we addressed you all, most of our attendance teams sort of switched to these engagement teams, right? We were trying to make sure that we knew where all of our students were and that they were engaged in instruction. This school year, the schools have gone back to more of an attendance team structure, certainly still looking at student engagement, but to really emphasizing attendance, to really making sure that schools are monitoring attendance closely, that we're monitoring attendance from a division level so that we can make sure our students are coming to school every day. And then what happens if those students aren't in school? So we have outlined very specific procedures for schools of what they can do with their attendance teams and their intervention teams to help students that aren't in schools. And then from a central office, how we can support that attendance as well.
Mrs. Shea, I actually have a follow-up to that. Do you mind?
Okay.
Okay, so how, how are we going to ensure consistency across the division, right?
Right. So that's a great question. So how we're going to assure consistency is again, sort of through that school quality lens. Like every school has a school quality plan. And so all of us in central office sit on teams and out in schools, we all sit on school quality teams. We help them, you know, monitor their data. And then specifically, we have put out guidance this summer to principals about reinstituting the attendance teams and procedures. And then Amory, Seeley, Jen Rucker, and I will go to the September principal meetings to make sure that we once again provide information and that we answer any questions. And of course, throughout the year, throughout the principal meetings, we'll make sure that principals have a clear understanding and support that they need to monitor the attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Marcy, Mrs. Shea, do you have additional questions for the team?
Just one last comment. Ms. Kinsella and I got to greet quite a few different groups that were returning over the last two weeks and just the excitement of our staff to be returning, particularly, y'all mentioned New Teacher Academy and the hundreds of new teachers we were welcoming and getting to have conversations with them during their kind of like community fair and just their excitement to be part of Henrico was just moving and we're excited. I know we're excited to have them. And so I'm really looking forward to a fantastic year and I appreciate all of the team's work, both that are in that room there, but also on a macro scale across our whole Henrico team to make this a fantastic year.
Okay, is that, is that all you have, Mrs. Shea?
Yeah, that's it. That's it, that's it.
Well, okay, well, my colleagues have asked some wonderful questions, but I still have some more. So again, I'd echo my colleagues' comments when they say they support the team, as Mrs. Shea mentioned, not just she and I have attended events, but all of us have attended events, whether we're out supporting the bond referendum in November or whether, I know we did the new bus driver orientation, we did the New Teacher Academy, we had quite a few board members at the Division-wide Back to School hosted by Glen Allen High School for the Division. I mean, just so many, and then orientations in our schools, so many different things going on and the energy really is contagious and can't thank the team, especially Family and Community Engagement Team really for orchestrating a flawless, flawless community event for the back-to-school kickoff for Henrico Schools. So thank everyone. And again, I echo the board's sentiments as to staffing. I know I've watched some of the numbers because the board members do get daily reports just in less than two weeks. I mean, the numbers have decreased by half in the elementary school and I'm just, and that's just elementary teachers. So I'm just blown away by the efforts of the team. But anyway, as we've been out and about and listening and talking in communities, one of the top things I'm hearing is safety. So I know I've listened to a few, I know I've listened to a safety presentation hosted by one of my elementary schools and I know high school and both middle school have covered it. Can you speak, Mr. Pritchard, to are there security cameras that we purchase involved? Have they been installed and has training occurred for employees on our new camera system?
Yes, we are currently in the process of continuing and ending installation of those cameras in our secondary schools. We're almost there and almost completed. Training has done with the actual manufacturer itself. Verkata was a part of that training session with all administrators, secondary administrators, both middle and high school.
Oh, okay.
So yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I also received the question about our SOOs and at one of my secondary schools and as to the additional we hired or are budgeted to hire an additional 10, correct?
Yes. And that was done primarily from a standpoint to fill in when our regular SOOs had training and so forth. They're not 10 additional SOOs that were going to schools, but they're there to help rotate and alleviate some of the...
As substitutes.
Yes, as substitutes. That's basically it. I know our SOOs go through extensive training only for, to be an SOO, but also there are additional training that they need to be a Henrico County Police Officer.
Okay, I appreciate your addressing that. And then outside of safety, transportation. Really enjoyed the time we've been able to spend with our transportation team and they are more than ready for back-to-school. But I do believe when on your slide for transportation, it says reduced number of buses scheduled to arrive after instructional bell. You did not say eliminated, which is what I really wanted to hear as a second bus run parent for the 20, for the last school year. And as a board member, I wanted to hear the word eliminated.
Yes.
Where are we there?
We are only two routes away from, on paper, to be in schools or buses that will arrive after the bell rings for the beginning of the school day. I do feel very confident that those numbers will be worked out. We could be at zero, being that they are generally in zones where they have worked themselves out before. It's not our heavy traffic volume areas. It's just that we're talking about routes over a long period of time or areas that are causing this. And I mean, we're still going through an employee shortage like everybody else, so we're adjusting and making do without inconvenience and families too much.
They've made a tremendous progress and to be down to just those two routes and as Mr. Pritchard stated, you know, wanting to be transparent that they are arriving after the start of the school day. The schools are prepared and understand that where there are affected routes so that they can serve students accordingly, but we feel confident that we'll be able to reduce that number to zero very quickly once we get into the rhythm of the year and get ridership stabilized.
And since you're on transportation, I got to make my one last plea. Everybody just remember the first week of school is the first week of school.
It's usually the first two. It usually takes what? Every year it takes what? About two weeks for it to normalize?
About two weeks to get it all worked out, yes.
That's right. And ride the bus. If you're going to be a bus rider, ride the bus on the first day in those first weeks. It really helps everyone with traffic patterns and our bus drivers are ready to greet their students. They understand sometimes our younger riders or riders for the first time may be nervous, but they're ready to greet them as our school staff on the bus ramps at the school. So I know it can be hard to put your little one on a bus for the first time, but best to do it on the first day and for those first weeks. That's, we highly encourage that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had for transportation. But I, and then I want to thank my colleagues for speaking to nutrition because I've actually had students and families inquire about that as well. Let me see. I appreciate Dr. Hughes saying that we will get, the board will receive an SOL presentation, I believe you said, in September.
Yeah.
Would that be at the first meeting or the monthly meeting at the end, once we...
I believe right now it's slated for the monthly meeting.
Okay, for the monthly meeting at the end of the month. Aren't we expecting more data in September from the Department of Education?
Yes, and I believe the presentation will be before that data. Is that correct? No.
No, it'll be, everything's released on that day.
Oh, everything will be released on that day.
Okay, fantastic. And then just appreciation to you, Mr. Pritchard, for mentioning that the board will receive a safety update in October because we have received a lot of questions, I believe, along the way, all of us. Let me see, what else? Oh, I know, this one's from Ms. Bolden. When I, when I look at, okay, so Dr. Cashwell says every class will be covered on day one, right, by someone qualified, a qualified instructor in the class. So when I look at the fact that I've got my elementary schools on our most recent report that I've, five out of the 27 teacher vacancies at the elementary level are in my schools, they're going to be covered on day one by qualified teachers. Just not permanent, I mean, they're just not permanent.
Well, it could be a board sub and in a number of cases, our board subs may be awaiting a credential to become a full-time teacher so we can offer that employment opportunity. It may be a central staff member with credentials who's been reassigned temporarily until someone can be hired. I'm not trying to answer for you. You were prepared to answer. Go for it.
You're perfect.
And she can add to that.
Is there anything to add? I mean, I just want to know how to answer questions. Should, where should parents who may inquire about this, what, go to the building principal?
Would it be appropriate to go to the principal? Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And really thank you and your team, and I hope you're collecting a lot of the reasons people joining us, as well as all the folks who unfortunately have left Henrico Schools to do what's best for them. But hopefully you're gathering that data to share with the board so that we can continue to make Henrico Schools the best, the best place to learn and work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And Mrs. Kinsella, do you mind? I had two more questions based off of some of the conversation that was shared, particularly around attendance. So with the attendance teams, are the teams assigned specific schools?
No, so there's attendance team in each school. So the attendance team in each school meets to review the attendance of the students in their schools. And then of course, when central teams go out and sit on school quality teams, then we assist with looking at their data at that time, too. So yes, we're all assigned to different schools for their school quality meetings. Does that clarify?
It does. And I remember asking a while ago, is there an attendance officer at each school and does that attendance officer participate in the attendance team?
So yes, the attendance officer can be defined as an attendance, a school social worker or we have attendance officers that are assigned to some of the schools in the school division. And yes, they sit on those teams.
Okay, so technically we don't have someone hired as an attendance officer in each school. However, an individual in another capacity will serve the role as an attendance officer if there is not one in the school.
That's correct.
Do I have that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there's multiple roles going on.
That's correct.
Okay. And then I also just want to, I'm starting to get some dings from my community regarding staffing, Holland Springs, Sansa, and Verena. Please note, I am aware that there are other areas that are fully staffed. I know in our area, it can be challenging because we have more needs in some of our schools than we do in others, but I want to reiterate, as it's been said often, that there will be a qualified individual that will be in these classrooms. And earlier, one of the questions was around resource equity and we will be working to really understand and using data to understand how we get to a permanent resolution. We do have temporary solutions in place that are going to work well, but I want to reiterate, yes, we still do have vacancies, but there will be someone qualified in our classrooms that will be instructing our babies and loving on our babies as they would across all of Henrico. So thank you so much, Mrs. Kinsella.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. And then lastly, Dr. Cashwell, it really is all hands on deck, I believe, as was mentioned by Ms. Ogburn. If you would, please share with the board maybe opportunities where we may be of assistance volunteering in and around Henrico County Public Schools, whether it's in our district or not, just where we're needed.
Absolutely. Well, I want to start by, you know, saying that first of all, the all-hands-on-deck approach, the Henrico team is incredible and, you know, from board members to staff members serving in new and different capacities and just rolling up their sleeves to pitch in and cheer on the team as we head to the first day has been incredible. But we recognize everyone has different skill sets to offer and some people may think, I'm not a qualified teacher, I'm not a trained teacher, I'm not a licensed teacher, but are there other ways I could help? We have a Henrico Heroes mentoring program, so whether you're a board member, community member, or a parent of a student within Henrico Schools and you want to find ways to give back and assist the community, the school communities, we're looking for adults to help mentor our students. A lot of the schools look for reading buddies to come in at different times, volunteer opportunities in the school, whether it's to assist throughout the school year or just those first few weeks as an extra set of hands on the bus ramp, whatever it might be. So I would say if you're interested in pitching in, there are a number of ways and it doesn't have to be teaching or serving in a classroom. I mean, there are so many ways, big and small. It could be assisting, I know a lot of schools have volunteers who do work entirely in their home away from the school, whether it's helping prepare teacher materials, cut out lamination, you name it. There are a number of ways to be involved.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that information. And that concludes it. Thank you to the team for this wonderful presentation and we are certain Monday is going to be an amazing day. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Board members, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, there appears to be none. The next item on the agenda is the amendment to the superintendent's contract. Board members, is there a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment of the superintendent's employment agreement extending her employment through July 1st, 2026?
I move that the school board authorize acting school board chair to execute the Fourth Amendment of the superintendent's employment agreement in a form approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, for the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. Now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And the ayes have it, let me say that again, the ayes have it, the board is unanimous and we have authorized myself to execute a Fourth Amendment of the superintendent's employment contract in a form approved by the county attorney. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you to the board. It's an honor and privilege to be able to continue to serve the Henrico community and appreciate your confidence in my leadership.
Thank you. And then the next item on the agenda is the approval of school board meeting dates for the 2023 calendar year. May I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the schedule of school board work sessions and monthly meetings for the 2023 calendar year, January through December 2023.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second, please?
A second?
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. Now for the roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The meeting dates have been approved. Board members, is there any additional new business to be presented? Hearing none. The last item on today's agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. Of course, the next meeting will be this evening's public meeting hosted 45 minutes from now at 6:30. After that, the next school board meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, September 8th, 2022, at 1:00 PM in the auditorium here at New Bridge Learning Center. Please note, the meeting time may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.